Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, September 9th, Please note that city council chambers will be open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. Citizens may also submit their comments in writing to cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com or by voicemail at 941-932-9437. All those comments must be received by Tuesday, September 8th, yesterday. And always we begin our deliberations with an invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be brought to us this morning by Councilman Byrd. Please stand.
May we bow our heads? Most gracious and everlasting Father, we come to you this morning first giving thanks. Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today for the decision-making process. Father, we ask your blessings upon all of those decisions, that they may be for the betterment of our city. These are many other blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Close the meeting to order. Ms. Boach?
There are no proclamations this morning, and we have no presentations.
With the point of the meeting of citizen comments, anyone who wishes to address the council on any item, non-agenda or not. Anyone who wants to speak to council? Anyone? Hearing none, let's move forward. Ms. Boach?
I'd just like to announce that we did not receive any citizen comments through the clerk office, either through voicemail or email regarding this meeting. So next we have the consent agenda. We're asking for approval of items A through F.
To move.
We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. The vote is five to zero. Ms. Boach?
Next, under Business Advertising Petitions Hearings and Communications, we have the first reading of ordinance 3068. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida vacating a portion of a 20-foot wide alley, as shown on the plat of Orange Park subdivision, recorded in plat book one, page 272 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, being generally located west of 13th Street West at the intersection with 14th Avenue West, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And again, this is a first reading today, so we do not require a vote. The second reading and the public hearing is scheduled for September 23rd. The next item is SU.20.1549, which is a public hearing and a quasi-judicial matter, so I'll go ahead and administer the oath at this time. Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. Again, this is SU.20.1549, Ward four, neighborhood 20.11. A request by Jeff and Jamie Fisher owners for a special use permit to construct a private residential dock into the Braden River in excess of 80 feet in length in the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district in the planned development of Braden River Lakes. The property is located at 4838 14th Avenue East. Again, this is a public hearing, and we'll be asking for a decision on this today.
Good morning. Marshall McCray, Planning and Community Development. I have a brief presentation, if you would, regarding this case. Thank you for that introduction sharing. And as noted, this is a special use regarding a private dock. As you know, you see these in a couple of different instances. In this instance, it's because of dimensional issues. The property is located at 4838 14th Avenue East. And what the request is to add a dock about 779 square feet in size, also adding a single boat lift. The dock can appear about 112 feet, more or less, beyond the mean-high watermark. And about 30 feet of the dock extends from the mangrove live end to the water channel to meet navigable water. As was mentioned earlier, the home is located in Braden River Lakes, and the property does have riparian rights. It is an irregularly shaped lot, though, which warrants some dimensional considerations. The subject property is identified here, and you see the expanse of mangroves beyond the property's property line before reaching the water out here. And a couple of other shots, again, you see the layout of the property. It narrows at the rear down to a very, very limited dimension. And why do we need a special use here? Again, as I mentioned earlier, it's because it's unable to meet the dimensional standards of the code. The code has a maximum length allowance of 80 feet for residential docks, and it also requires a 10-foot setback on each side. The applicant is requesting a dock of 112 feet, more or less so, as to reach navigable water, and a reduction of those setbacks because of the configuration of this property. We define that the requested distance is the minimum necessary to reach navigable water. And as far as the setbacks, you see the circled here, the tightness of the rear property line. It's only 15 and a half feet wide. The 10-foot cannot be achieved and still provide a dock here. So it's requesting a reduction of side setbacks to eight foot, one inch on the west side and three feet, two inches on the east side.
Yes, sir.
The land that we're looking at, is that mangrove? Is that submerged? Is that, and more than, is that state-owned? What's the, what's the status of that?
It is, it is not privately owned, so it would be state-owned and state-managed and governed. But those are mangroves there.
Is it underwater? Is it?
It's, 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 I imagine it's dry, some of it's dry most of the time, but it is tightly influenced.
And so anything, if they were to go dock, they've got to get state permits to, because there's going to be mangrove mitigation there?
There'll be some trimming, and there's allowance for trimming for a dock to reach water. The state wants us to be able to reach navigable water, so allowance is there for that. The applicant has received state DEP self-certification also. I wanted to point out that the joining property owners on the east and west have signed letters of concurrence about the setback reduction, and they're in agreement with that. That setback reduction does not impede their ability to have docks and enjoy a dock on their property as well. Here we see some dimensional illustrations for the, for the property. Again, that eight foot, one inch on the west side and the three foot, two inch on the east side. Generally speaking, it meets all the requirements associated with getting a dock, but for those dimensional standards, we do feel that the requested dimensional relaxation is warranted for this property owner to reach navigable water. We do recommend approval, subject to the standard conditions, keeping the dock in good working order so as not to degrade the value of nearby properties, lighting kept to a minimum, and requiring it to be either automatically or manually switched on so it's not continually illuminated, and also requiring any other state or federal permits that are required. This was heard by the planning commission at their last regular meeting on August 19th, and the planning commission unanimously recommended favorably for the, for the request and did maintain the same stipulations as recommended by staff. So I'm available for questions as needed. I believe the applicant's here.
Any questions of Marshall?
Needed.
Anyone? Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Let's open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this request? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Chair wants to take a motion.
Motion to approve 20.1549.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve SU.20.1549. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One.
Yes.
SU.20.1549 is approved. The vote is five to zero. Ms. Boach?
Next, we have another public hearing. This is Resolution 20-68, the Water Sewer Reclaimed Water Rate Adjustment. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, amending the city's rate and fee structure for city water, sewer, and reclaimed water charges by increasing such fees, providing for an effective date. Again, this is another public hearing, and we will be asking for a decision on this today. I did want to let you know that this was noticed on everyone's water bills, so all of the citizens were made notice of this meeting today.
Okay. Carla, Jim, anything, any comments previous?
I think just the comments, that this is in keeping with our normal raises each year, trying to keep up with the CPIU, and in order to be consistent with trying to keep the $4 million that you heard about last week that goes into public projects. So this allows us to do the raises that are necessary for the employees and still maintain the maintenance numbers that we have in the budget and the capital projects we have in the budget. And it is a 2% rating.
Any questions of Carla? Hearing none. Let's open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this resolution, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this resolution? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Chair wants to take a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2068 for the question.
Did I miss a second?
I'll go ahead in a second. Discuss.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve Resolution 2068.
Yeah, so.
Any comments?
That is, yeah, I said with the question. So the 2%, is that, is that pretty much where inflation is? Is the government has a sea of cola? Is that, are we in line with all the figures?
We're a little higher than the CPIU. I think the CPIU, Mr. Boach, I think it's in the ones, or similar, about 1. It was 163 two months ago. So in our, in our ordinance or resolution years and years ago, we established that we wanted to keep up with those increases because of what had happened in the past, that we, we'd indicated to our bond people that we will continue to increase in accordance with CPIU. So it's a little bit higher. What we did is calculated out what it's going to cost to maintain the levels that we had. Not more, not less. It's on water, sewer, and charges. It's not on the solid waste. It's only on the water and sewer.
And I was going to ask that. So I know, I don't separate my bill out, but I know I pay about $75 to $80 a month. Probably that's an average bill. So it's not, it's not for garbage, sewer, and water. It's just for sewer and water. What, what might the citizens look at?
If you got a $40 bill?
It's an 80 cent increase. 80 cent if it was your water and sewer bill. If it was about $40, if it was $60, it'd be about $1.20 a year between those two.
But the average city bill is probably, what?
You can look at the minimum uses, which is the most.
Jim, sorry.
Probably a minimum. $70 is about minimum.
Yeah, that's about right. Okay.
What if we had, well, if we kept it at the CPIU, that, what kind of dollars are we talking about difference?
On, let's see.
I mean, like, it's, it's almost, it's.
Seven, it would be.
Much, would it?
It would be a, tens of thousands. Yes. Because you've got to realize, water and sewer bills in total are almost $20 million, or $18 million.
So it'd probably be 40,000?
Yeah.
I'm just calculating. Pretty good, huh? Yeah. I'd recommend that we keep it at the CPIU.
We have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
One?
No.
Two?
Yes.
Resolution 2068 is approved. Vote is three to two. Ms. Boach?
Next, we have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 3071. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, requiring business establishments to post signage regarding face coverings as more fully specified herein. Repealing and replacing emergency ordinance 3067, providing for severability, providing for reading by title only, and providing for an effective date. Again, this is a public hearing today.
Just, this is the ordinance that would replace the emergency ordinance that was enacted related to mask signage. It doesn't change the, the terms of the ordinance in any way. It's just adopting it by regular ordinance instead of by emergency ordinance. The only item to note is that it would remain in effect so long as the state declared emergency for COVID-19 was in effect.
Any questions of Scott?
Yeah. So, so Scott, just as, as a recap of what we're doing here, the county, the county has passed its own ordinance, which is a little more stringent than our ordinance, as in because it imposes fine, possible fines, and we didn't have that discussion at all. So this is true, right?
It's true that the county's ordinance goes, excuse me, goes beyond what the city requires, yes. The county actually mandates wearing masks, whereas the city ordinance only mandates the signage.
Okay, so trying to be the friendly city here, but yet still be respectful of proper health. The main reason we're doing this is that we, we feel that our ordinance is more user-friendly, but still recommends that, because at the end of the day, people are either going to wear a mask or they're not. It's, it's, it's turned into a personal position that they're quite strongly committed to. So, you know, I'm not for fining people, so that's why I'm supporting this. This, this protects our citizens from the county ordinance automatically taking place if we didn't have this.
Yes, this ordinance supersedes the county's ordinance based on its terms.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions of Scott? Hearing none. Open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this ordinance? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve ordinance 3071. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Order 3071 is approved. The vote is five to zero. Ms. Boach, any new business?
No, sir.
Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Good. Counsel reports, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to ask publicly that the council, possibly people in the audience, keep Bob Swett's family in your prayers. Most of us knew Bob. He was a supervisor of election for years, and I went to high school with him, and he passed away. I guess it's a couple of months now. But also, one of his twin daughters died within weeks after Bob passing. She had cancer. And she was married to Lance Clayton, who worked for our Braden and Houston authority for years. I think he worked for the Sarasota Braden and Houston authority. And she was a schoolteacher, very well respected and loved. And I just believe that Sue needs our prayers. It's a lot of weight to lose your husband and your daughter, one of your daughters, within a six-week period. Thank you.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yeah. We had a couple, well, we had a member from, well, we had a citizen come in and ask about contracts. And I, I asked him what, what he was referring to. And I guess he'd seen on a meeting. There was talk at some point about redoing contracts for department heads. But I don't remember what was said. I think it had something to do with the planning director.
I can, I can address.
Okay.
What we had started looking at is it's a pretty, it's a pretty universal practice, and I don't want to say a contract is probably the wrong word for it. We liked, we liked that and looked at a, a employment agreement, which lays out all of the city's rights and all of the employees' rights during their tenure as a, as a department head or a senior management person here in the city. And we hadn't distributed yet. We had talked about working on it, because it was primarily just laid out what your salary was. It lays out what would happen to you if indeed you were asked to not be here during a certain period of time that was not for cause. And it laid out severance. Rather than always being an issue or debate, it would lay it out upfront, so everybody knew exactly what would be entailed in that going forward. It also gave any other rights or any other benefits that you would get, they would all be laid out in this employment agreement. So it's not unclear, which sometimes it is later on during employment, as to what you're entitled to. That was the intent of it, to be able to do it. It didn't entitle you to anything different than what you currently really have. And it was just, there's still employees by right. It is all of that, that there's, there's no, no change in any of that. There's, there's no, like, the contract I had 20 years ago, pretty much was a five-year contract. And that didn't lay out any terms of separation. It didn't lay out any of those terms, all of which would have led to a, some sort of discussion had, had any of those been enacted. So this is just a way of looking at it. We looked at several things that are out there. We want to bring it forward to you. We thought the timing was probably right when you're getting ready to hire a planning director, that that may well be the time to look at this, if you're so inclined. I think it would be a good idea, since it's not really changing any of the terms of your employment. It's just letting everybody know exactly what would be expected of the employee and of the city if, for some reason, decided not to be around. We, we've looked at it far enough to put a draft together, looked at it far enough to have our labor attorneys look at it, to make sure that everything that would, would be or should be in there to protect the city is in there. It's not, it's not so much employee-driven idea. It's a city-driven agreement.
So this, because I, so it's separated out for department heads and senior management. Does it, does it spill over into all employees?
No.
What?
No, it is only department heads or your senior, senior management only from the standpoint of severance, because they are a little higher, but only really to the department directors.
Okay. Well, here's, here's my concern with this, is that, that, I had a discussion yesterday, looking through the budget. I'm, I'm surprised, I mean, I shouldn't be surprised, but I am surprised at, at how many employees we have that are up and beyond $100,000 a year. A lot. And I'm going to be making a request for that information, because then, because I discussed, you and I had a discussion in an office yesterday, that, that, you know, this is a city where the average household family income is $41,000 a year. That's mom and dad combined. And I, I don't have a problem with people being paid what they're worth, but I, I do want to look at whether we've grown disproportionately, become too top-heavy. Not that there's anything, I can't, you can't go back and fix what, what's been done, but we can look at where we are heading forward. So this is something I'm thinking about. And, and what, what I'm, what I'm concerned with, with this is, are we separate, are we further separating the haves from the have-nots? That, you know, it seems to me what's good for one is good for all. And coming up with a special agreement for department heads and senior management, who are already well compensated, as opposed to a lot of our people, which are making very little money. And then remember, too, whenever we give pay raises, it's one thing to get a 3% pay, a pay raise on a large amount of money, as opposed to a pay raise on a small amount of money. It's, it's, it's the same pay raise, but not really. So anyway, this is, this is just my thinking of it, is I don't see, we, I haven't seen where we've had an issue. Seems to me that our, our department heads have been pretty stable. They're, they're operating without, this is not, I, I think we're looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. So anyway, and I'm, I'm concerned with anything that's not, doesn't seem to be fair.
I would only ask that you take a look at it first, before you draw those conclusions. That's all. I think take a look at it, present it to council, which was still the intent to take a look at it. At that point, those various things that you, you like or don't like could certainly be discussed, but I think that everyone should be entitled to take a look at it, to see what's really being, because it hasn't been distributed to anyone.
Mr. Sanders?
You go ahead. Is this becoming a practice throughout cities or government?
It's a long sense of practice.
It's been a long practice?
Absolutely. And in private business, too.
Well, I know what private business is. But I ask a legal question, is, it seems like we're, this is a stretch to put contracts out to public employees, to the taxpayers, because these contracts, I'm very familiar with them. And they're, they're sometimes hard to break and becomes real, it's kind of like a union contract, but it's worse. And it sets all kinds of negotiations future forward, you know, moving where you live, how much percentage a year you get. If you don't get it, severance, buyouts. I mean, these, these buyouts and these, it's, it's, it's basically in private businesses retained for the very high-up executives. I mean, people that are making a million dollars plus, that, that protects them from making undue risk in private business and being taken out of service by a board that's just disgruntled with them. So I'm all very opposed to it, especially in government. Is there any, did you have any comment to that?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to note, I, I haven't been engaged on that issue. I think Labor Council for the city is working on that. I will say, I, I don't think it's that unusual for your upper-level officials in the city to have some form of employment agreement. There are limitations on, by statute, on what the city can provide in terms of severance and things like that, so.
We don't have anybody that's done a contract now, do we?
No.
That includes you.
No.
No, but no one is, you know, at-will employees, that always is the best, in my personal opinion. So if this came before a vote, I would vote no on that, just FYI. So no contracts, as far as I'm concerned. But I do want to discuss a couple of other things that, and this is be, is be not retro.
We'll get to you, because this is under Patrick's business?
I understand, but it's under the same thing. But I can wait.
All right.
Sure.
Does Mr. Byrd like to speak?
No, I just meant it involves contracts. But that's okay. I can wait.
Yeah, I, it's just a brief comment. I guess I'm, I, I agree. I think we should look at the, how it's written and what the agreement actually says before drawing any type of a conclusion. I'm reminded of once, we talked about MOUs and what was the basis of those agreements. And, you know, so for me, I understand the concern of saying, you know, a contract and, you know, if it's drawn a certain way, you know, that means whatever happens, you know. And so I, I would like to see what it actually says and read the agreement, because I, I see a difference in, you know, full-blown contract and an agreement that just outlines some of the expectations, if I, if you want to put it that way, of the employee. So, no other comments.
And, and I just wanted to say, I, my, my, the reason I brought it up today was, I, I remember hearing bits and pieces. We had a citizen come in, and I didn't know what the heck he was talking about. I asked him what he was talking about. I asked him what he was talking about. And so I just brought it up today because I, I was just curious as to where, where we are, you know, what this, what this is. So I now know more than I did five minutes ago.
Councilwoman Barney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember a time in the city, under a previous administration, where department heads did not know from one year to the next if they would have a job. And the previous administration kind of liked it that way and kind of used it as a whip rather than a carrot, where department heads would come to the first council meeting of the year and find out if they had a job or not. That was, I know Mr. Bird remembers that, I know Mr. Gallagher remembers that. I know Mr. Gallagher lived under that system. I personally did that, did not find that to be professional. I also remember coming in and being told that every department head had a five-year contract, whether the council liked it or not. I didn't think that was a great idea. So I would be interested in seeing what this employment agreement form looks like before I form any kind of opinion on it. I just would like to see what it is.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys got, got me thinking about history again, and I was going to cover what, what Mary Ann said. But I think it's important, especially in these days, and we're looking for, to, for a planning director, which is a very, very important position for this city, that you do need to put a package together. Based on the fact that, in fact, the one, three that we're looking at do not live in this community. So they've got a big cost factor in their life to sell their house where they live, move down here, buy another place, without any kind of agreement that if, if things changed in the, say, in the two-year cycle of the council, and all of a sudden there were some people that didn't like that individual and could get rid of them. And here they have made a dramatic change in their life financially. So I, I think if, in order to get the, the good people, they're going to look for a package. I know I would. And to step back in history, when I retired in 91, my idea was to, to go and be a fire chief in another city. And so I applied, and I was a final selection on two cities out of the state. And I made the third round in Tallahassee. They were smart enough not to bring me to the final one. But, and they both had package deals. Knowing that you had to sell your home, and you had to come up there and buy a home, and you had to move your family. And so that, and that's 30 years ago. So I, I think it's, it's pretty important that we, I'm not saying give all the department heads today a contract, although probably it wouldn't. If I was a department head today, I'd want a contract. But I'm saying if we're going to go forward and we're looking at, and, you know, with the city of Bradenton, it's not going to stop moving. I know when I was chief, I made, when you were talking about salaries bill, I made $10,000 a year less than the chief of Sarasota. Sarasota, their staff was, and firefighters, police officers, they all made more money than we paid in Bradenton. I don't think Bradenton overpays. I think you get what you pay for. And I think to start considering that we're paying people too much, you're going to, you're going to be on the losing side of that. I really believe that in my heart. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Gallagher, the consensus is bring something forward, the council will look at it and then decide what they want to do. All right? Anything else, Ms. Roth?
No.
Mr. Sanders, council report?
No, but I want to finish up with that. It sounds like we're going to bring a contract forward. I mean, we can offer executives or department heads incentives. I mean, I've done it all my life, you know, without, without employment contract. I mean, they've paid for my house. In fact, one deal, they even paid for my farm. Paid for my move, paid for all my airfare, paid for my hotels, all my expenses, thousands and thousands of dollars. But maybe they didn't have a contract. Because a contract, it can get way out of hand real quick. That if you've got a person in your employment, whether it be in government or whether it be in private business, and they don't work out, you're going to have to buy them out. And those are deals you see in pro sports and in very executive-level jobs, much higher payroll level than what we're talking about here. So I'm adamantly opposed to that. But even if we do get into the weeds on that, there should be other requirements. If they're making those kinds of salaries, they should, and we've gotten away from that, and it wouldn't affect anybody currently, but they should live in the city, which supports them. And we've gotten away from that, that now we have, you know, people that don't live in the city. It also should have caps on raises. You know, a 2% raise to somebody making 200,000 is sometimes more than what a guy that's working in the Public Works Department, whoever, would love to see over his lifetime, maybe. So that involves that. And I think that when we do that, we also need to have some data to support what we say up here, that, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, and maybe you know that, but I don't know that, that how we compare it to Florida, other areas, how we compare to our region. We should have data to support our decisions. You know, we just don't, shouldn't handle that salary because that's what we feel good at that day. So I'd like to see comparisons. I asked for that last meeting. And Sharon and Carl, I don't know if you've came up with that or not. I just don't mean go pick out what justifies a salary, but give me some data all over the state, you know, and regionally, by city size. And we should be, at least we should be doing that to justify our salaries in every department. And we should be doing that probably annually. So when we bring this back, we need to consider those things, in my opinion. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Bird?
Nothing to report.
All right. Me either. I'm good. Department head reports, Ms. Poshin, anything?
No, sir.
Jim, anything?
The only thing I'd tell you is, as you'll see, our weekly report went out this morning. And I'm happy to say that our new sidewalk cleaning machine has arrived. So you'll see a new piece of machinery. We'll be getting training next week on it. But it will be dedicated to the Riverwalk as well as to this downtown area for cleaning sidewalks. And we will be able to also utilize it to clean the decks in both of the parking garages. And it was really the fact that this past year, we hired a firm to clean the Judicial Center garage, and they brought in one of these machines. And for the amount of money that we spent to them, we'll hopefully pay for this machine in a couple of years.
Is that Bradenton's new Zamboni?
It's kind, it does kind of look like a mini Zamboni.
Maybe we should nickname it, come up with a communications, maybe we should put out a newsletter, nickname our new Zamboni to clean our streets.
We can absolutely do that.
Might be a good little PR thing, huh?
Absolutely.
A Florida Zamboni.
Bradenton Zamboni.
The other benefit of it is it has a built-in pressure washer. So we'll be able to take it places to do pressure washing where, right now, we might be limited in our capabilities to get there. So we're very happy to have it here and appreciate the council.
Good question. I got a, I'm just going to, while you're here, I've got a citizens that made a request. And I'm not sure whether to go with you or Billing. But they've got, they've got a double property that's been, there's a business up front and rentals in the back. The guy's been there for as long as I remember. And basically, through, through life, life issues, he's been living in the back half of the property, which is now, has been him residential, but he's still being billed business. And he asked, is that, can anything be done about that? I don't know. I'm not pushing for it one way or another. Do I talk to you? Do I talk to Billing?
If you get the information to us, we'll coordinate with Billing to figure out what options might be available.
Okay. Because I figured it would have to be, no matter what, it'd have to sign off with you.
And it might be a means of, you know, a meter gets shut off. I'm not sure if it's a dual meter for the property or not, but we can take a look.
Okay, I'll forward it to you. Thank you.
Just want to remind you that Friday, they're going to have the Tribute to Heroes memorial service out at Riverwalk. It'll be virtual this year. Information is on the newsletter and everything, but again, it starts at 8:30. M E T V will be taping it video, and it'll also be live on Facebook. So I just want to remind you.
That's great, and thank God we're having 8 o'clock in the morning instead of 10 o'clock.
I think it's 8:30. I sent you the itinerary, it'll be open in comments.
Steve Faber, anything? Scott, you have anything?
Just briefly, on the Causeway issue, I don't have a full report today, but I just wanted to update the council. We have had discussions with the local delegation on that. We've had some discussions with DOT, and they are looking at it. So I should have something back for the council shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I just, thanks for indulging me for a minute. I just want to let you all know a couple of different things. I think it's probably important as we, as we move forward through these, through the election time and through this next year. I just want to let you know effectively today that I intend to retire in June of 2021. It's not a decision that I have taken lightly. I know I've talked to the mayor about it. I've talked to several council people over probably the last six or eight months about when was my time to leave. And I think it's important that, that with all the transition we have going on with this election time, with the referendums, with a lot of things that we have going on, it's probably a good time for new blood to come in and, and take over with, from my perspective. Or if council decides not to go that way at all, it's a good transition time to, if you don't want an administrator, to sit there and say that that's not the avenue you want to go either. So I think that with all that, that, you know, I certainly want to be able to help work through the transition in the CRAs. You know, we're going to be looking for a director down there to work through that transition, work through the planning transition, getting a new director in here as well, working with them. And it's going to be a little different unless things change dramatically, because that'll take six or eight weeks to get in there. Whether we're all back here or not will make a huge difference in bringing somebody new in. Marshall's still out, Myra's still out, there's still a lot of people that are out. That'll be a little different scenario as well. So hopefully work through those things. As we presented in the past, we presented an org chart that I think works for the 21st century that we really need to examine and say, how do we want to do business in the future? I think it's even more, could be even more important, depending on the results of the referendum, as to how we do that, how you approach that, I think could be even more important. And last but not least of that is that if you're going to hire a new administrator, gives you plenty of time to work through that process, also allows you plenty of time. Because I laid out the timeframes that professional management people take to do that kind of search takes quite a while. So if that's the avenue, the way you would go, certainly afford a lot of opportunity to do that. And then, like I said, that wasn't the last, this is the last but not least in my thoughts is that I will continue for that time to work tirelessly for y'all and for, most importantly, the citizens of the city of Bradenton, to do what I feel is, but I think, hopefully you all think the same thing, a great job for them, because they are first and foremost in this whole scenario. So thank you.
Carl, thank you. Thank you for informing us of that. As you write, there is so much to talk about that there's going to be a lot, a lot of discussion getting it. Is there anything, as we move forward on the planning director, is there anything that we could accomplish today? Because as you, as you said, it's going to, it's still going to take a while. Do we have the opportunity today to do anything to help move that down the road?
I think you can decide. I think, it's been very clear, there are two people that stand out in your mind to make a decision on which of those two. And I like to couch it in that I think they are two excellent candidates. They bring two different things to the city. And that's for you to decide which way you think you would like to go. The only thing that I hope you do, because I think because they are so close in being quality candidates, that there could be a split decision amongst people as to who you think is the best for the job. And that's understandable. The one thing that I would hope you would do, being a department head and knowing how the department heads feel, that once you've made that decision, you would colet, so you would, you would get collaboratively behind one candidate to unanimously select them for the job. You may disagree as to who it is, but I would hope that they would have unanimous support when they come into this job from all five council folks.
Has the third candidate taken himself out?
He has not taken himself out. He had made it very difficult to get here. So what we wanted to see is, if, if indeed the first two were really where you wanted to go, if we couldn't come to some conclusion, then, then we could invite him in if that was-
I didn't want to have a very entailed discussion if he was still out there because he could hear us.
Yeah, it was-
That wouldn't be fair.
It was to the point of saying, tried to get him in, was taking some, some difficulty, many days to get here, instead of a flight here. It was like, ew, this is a lot.
Showed some disinterest.
It was a lot.
Right, I understand.
So, but I think the two that you still have could be, could work very well. I just would hope that council would get back behind whoever is selected, comes out of this, has a unanimous choice to move forward. Because they both have indicated it would be six or eight-week transition period to get here, so.
Patrick?
Yeah, well, and so getting back to, to the question, because we are in a public meeting and bound by sunshine, otherwise, I agree, and I interviewed all three. And I'm, I find both candidates superior and acceptable, that they have, they're different, but they're both, it would be a good choice as far as I'm concerned. So what, is there anything, is there anything to be done today while we're in a public meeting? Or not? Or I, I don't know the process. How do we keep this moving?
I mean, I think we could actually do a ballot like we did before. If you want to give us a few-minute recess, we get to the end and we could come back. We could prepare a ballot if you wanted to, like we did before.
Are we okay with this potential third candidate that we don't get into trouble here? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Yeah, this decision is completely within the discretion of the city council.
Right. I'm assuming we could stop at any point and say, hey, we've had, we've had enough, we're ready to make a decision. So I just want to make sure that you can't say, hey, you didn't give me an opportunity.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
And all three have had interviews. It was just a case of-
Right, right. I understand.
So they've had interviews.
I understand.
Yes, I guess one of my, first of all, you know, I've known for a while that, I remember when you first came to the city, year, many years ago. And, you know, finding this out, you know, this morning, and I say that, that I've always felt that some kind of way, we needed to have some kind of a plan or a way of, you know, looking at employees that may not be around anymore. And so in saying that, and just finding out, and I know we were discussing the planning director, I look at, you know, the two candidates that I interviewed. They're, they're bringing, both of them excellent, but they're bringing different things. And right now, I'm thinking in my mind as far as, you know, one brings one thing to the table, one skill set, and the other brings another. So, you know, I, just finding this news out, I would like to, you know, hold off on a ballot vote, even if, just give it a little time, let's, we got a 5-0- Let's, we got a five oh one, you know, later on today. Let me think about it because I honestly, I, you know, and you all interviewed them, and I don't want to get in specifics, but, you know, in losing a department head, you know, doing what you do, it all of a sudden makes me think about one of the candidates and what they may bring to the table. So in saying that, I, I would like, and I'm not saying this wait a week or anything, but we got to come back at five oh one. And if it's okay that we can just, if we're going to do that, I don't mind doing it then.
And I, I do not want to rush anyone. I, I just wanted to ask the question while we're here. I, I have no desire to push anyone, to steer anyone. I, I, you know, as you know, sunshine, public meetings, is the only opportunity I have. And I'm, as long as we're moving down, as long as we're moving down the road, I'm happy.
I think the only question that I received from them, because I tried, I interviewed one after the meeting, then interviewed, talked to them after meeting, and went to lunch with George after the meeting, saying, are there any questions you have of me that you would maybe not ask city council? And one of the things they really asked was, well, how long till we'll be making a decision? And I said, quickly, we'll be making a decision. I said, I can't give you an exact timeframe, but we will be moving quickly now that we're at this process to, to get a decision made. And I think they were both excited that it was not going to drag on for a long period of time before a decision is made.
Should we have open discussions since, we don't have to vote, open discussion and then maybe vote this afternoon at five? Can we do that?
I'm fine with that.
Or, or we can always decide to kick it down the road till next week or next, but I think we need to do it. But we need to have some open discussion and then some time to let it sink in, what our opinions of, of each of the two candidates.
Scott, you want to weigh in on that?
On which part?
Open discussion.
I mean, that's the only way you're gonna.
How else am I going to know?
That's right.
You know, this is something that you can't do in a shade meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I don't know that we got any choice. And X twenty after nine, this is the shortest meeting I've been to in two years. So I'd say this, this, go for it.
I'm an, I'm an outsider to this particular hiring, obviously, since I'm going to be gone in January. But always remember, you may pick a person, and that person, for whatever reason, may say no. But it's, you're in a good position because you have two candidates that all of you seem to agree are pretty good people, so.
And I think in any instance, when you decide, I think your motion should be to go negotiate with them.
Yes, absolutely.
Because that's what you're doing. You're trying to negotiate that they would come in, they would accept the job, they would want to be here. Because if they decide and tell you they don't want to be here under the terms and conditions, you would need to know that as well. That's one of the things, and I don't, you know, the things that were discussed earlier, that is one of the reasons that you put some things down in there. It would talk about, that the agreement that we talked about was, there are some things that are very favorable to the city in there. That if you, because of what we've gone through on a very short-term department head, you know, you can give up the twenty weeks of severance to someone. You can by the state. But we were trying to lay out that if you were here a short period of time, it would be a much less amount of severance that would be given. So it was trying to, to celebrate or to give benefit to those with longer tenures with the city and less with those that are short-term. So it was attempting to take some of those things, laying out exactly what you said, that if you were coming from out of state, would you get some sort of help or assistance in moving here? Yes or no? This is what you get, you know, end of story. Those kind of things would be laid out. So it can be negotiated or it was just an agreement. It recognizes that every one of us as department heads is an at-will employee. It recognizes that if you are terminated for cause, there is no severance, there is no nothing. That's all laid out. It's just trying to, if, when you look at administrators in the future, there's car allowances. If you're going to get an allowance, it says you get that. It says, or it says zero. So there's no debating what the thought was when you go in. So it was just trying to clarify that for, for everyone that's here and certainly those in the future. The reason it was probably good for me to bring it up is it was not going to affect me. It was not something that I was looking at for me. I've known that for quite a while. Bringing these forward was looking at, how are we dealing with future department heads or future administrators? Certainly not me in that, so. But, but that's why it was making sense with this planning director hire that we would look at those types of things.
Mr. Mayor? So what's the, Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Sanders. I think we ought to discuss it this morning. We'd say it's been, it's a short meeting. We haven't been here this short in a long time. At least let's get it out on the table. And maybe during the discussion that everybody has, it will help Mr. Byrd clear up whatever is, is, is getting to think he's not ready. I mean, they, I watched the interview twice. Patrick, you guys did a great job doing. I think you brought out enough information that I could make a decision. And I understand that you all have personally interviewed again. Certainly, having discussion this morning should clear up any question you might have to something that you didn't hear that two other people did, did hear. So I'm all for just putting it on the table this morning and talking about it.
Mr. Byrd?
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess, you know, since we're going to talk about it, I, you know, I'll let it out. I tried to speak in general. But, you know, I look at the situation. We have a city administrator is not going to be around. I looked at the two candidates and I interviewed. I, I think I watched the interview three times. And in my opinion, I think one brings, they bring a certain skill set that's going to be more along the lines of planning and a planning director. And another one, I think we're stronger as far as the administrative skill set. So, you know, for me, finding out, and Carl knows that, you know, what, it's been an hour now? I found out that, you know, he's leaving in, in June. So for me, the only thing that, if it had not been for that, I would have been able to, let's do the ballot poll right now. But I want to make sure that whatever decision that I make is going to be something that's going to be the best for the city of Bradenton. Whereas, you know, before it was like, okay, we have a city administrator and, you know, we're looking for a planning director. So right now, in my mind, I'm saying that, you know, if we can get someone that's going to have the skill set along the lines of administrate, maybe that individual gets more of a, a thought, or I will look at that individual a little bit more than I would have prior to this morning. And that's the only thing I, and I, I was just, you know, trying to say, okay, let's sort of.
Carl, I think that's two different trails for us to travel on. I mean, we, right now, we're concentrating on, on a different thing other than the public or the administrator.
Right, but.
And that should not affect our choice for this position that we, we've done the interview.
But at the same time, I've always felt that if you can have a, a, a workforce that can bring different things to take, so that you, you have a, a complete picture. Right now, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I give you a good example of a planning. You can get a planning director that's just planning. I don't think that would be the best fit right now, knowing that, you know, you have a administrative.
Are you saying that if, if Carl stayed, your mind tells you to go with A? But since Carl's leaving, you might want to go with B?
I would say it would enter into my thought process on who, who I would decide on because I feel that I would, I would go for that candidate that would have more of an administrative skill set that they're bringing to the table than otherwise looking at someone who's just maybe looking at planning.
How do you tie that together? That's where I'm confused.
Well, perhaps the two candidates that we interviewed, one of the candidates has been a city manager before.
I understand that.
So if we're looking at bringing someone into the planning department that has additional skill sets and knowing that Mr. Callahan is going to be leaving in June, perhaps your opinion gets swayed towards that individual thinking, should she choose to come in and we get to work with her, then it might be that we consider moving her into, out of, out of planning and into city administration because she has done that before and she has the skill set. She has the contacts. The other gentleman that we interviewed, again, has, has, he had impeccable credentials too. And he has worked in municipal government. He's worked in county government, and he's worked in regional government. But he's never done city administration as such. So I understand what Mr. Byrd is saying.
I think you answered the question.
Mr. Mayor?
You've got a person that can fill that spot.
We have two people that can fill that.
I understand that, but fill the spot either direction you go.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Sanders?
I'm going to throw you a curve ball.
Inside or outside?
Are you just brushing us back or is it chin music?
Okay, just listen.
Okay.
Before today, I didn't know we was potentially interviewing for a city manager or a city administrator. So with that said, I'd like to table that portion of it. And I understand what Mr. Byrd's saying. We got a candidate that could be one thing. And Mr. Callahan says, well, wait a minute. Who are we trying to hire? We trying to hire a planning director or a city administrator? Well, I thought we was trying to hire a planning director, so I'm going to focus on that. And my best candidate was out of Pennsylvania because he has the skill set and he has the, what I call the fortitude or the ambition to do the very best. The other candidate has been around for a long time, had been city manager, actually resigned, had some other issues. And I talked to Mr. Callahan about this last night. And if he wants to step up and address it, I have issues in hiring that person, period. So I hope I'm going to be here for the next two years. I hope I'd have, I just have issues. And I, I witnessed it in the interview I had with them that they wanted to be the boss and want higher pay. And I felt a little intimidated. So I could not vote for that person for either position.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah. Okay, so first off, the, the one thing, and Carl, Carl and I had this discussion in detail yesterday is, as you all recall, before, before we, you know, appointed Carl city administrator, we never had a city administrator. So we went through all those years without one, and everything seemed to work fine. Not saying it hasn't worked fine. It has. It's worked excellent, and I, and I salute him for his efforts. And certainly, we had a recession to get through that, that called for leadership, and I salute him for helping us with that. There is the possibility that we may not, we're talking about when Carl retires as to whether we still need a, a city administrator. I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, we may not. We may, we may have, we may be able to go back to where we used to. So that discussion, that is a whole discussion and, and, and a worthwhile discussion. And, and it's going to take quite a while. And to be honest, I don't know. I really don't. I don't have a preference. I don't, this is, this is, I, I will find out. And also, I will go along with the will of the council that I, I recognize. I, I have one vote, one opinion, and, and it, it, that's fine. That's, that's the way government works. And I live with the, and I live with the choices. And once again, I'll say, both of these candidates are, in my opinion, excellent. I, I don't, I really don't. My feelings are not going to get hurt no matter which way we go right now, or, or later, or, or next week. I mean, I, I really don't. I'm just, I was just trying to get this dialogue down to where we can get moving forward. So that being said, you know, the only thing that I, I would say is, rather than, than, than go the route that Mr. Sanders said, of, I'm, I'm not sure, she didn't, the one candidate did not seem aggressive or ambitious, you know, but obviously, and I don't know if those terms are correctly, but that, that I, I, she made it clear to me that she would be wanting to be a planner. But her, her history is in, mostly in management. The one thing I did touch on was salary. And I, I, I feel that she's going to be wanting, regardless of what we hire her for, if we did, she'll be wanting to get closer to her old salary. And that's fine, that's fine. But as you've said, as I said, mentioned earlier, I am concerned about salary creep at the top. And I, I will say that the individual, the other individual is very eager, made up his mind to move, already sold his home. He basically is going to, come hell or high water, he's going to move somewhere. And he was very happy with the salary that was offered as, as his opinion at, at the bottom, the bottom that we offered. So when we get in there, when we hire someone, and, and I made it perfectly clear that, you know, that, that what we need more, what we've learned is what we need down there is a manager, 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 manager. And that my thought would be if we were to go with him, we'd bring him in lower and offer him incentive to get higher through superior management skill. So these are just my thinking. And, 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 and once again, these, that, that's, those are my thought patterns. Let's not get set on the fact that we need a city administrator because I, I think from the dialogue I had with Carl yesterday, we may not. I, I don't know whether, whether you're, you're even on that road. But that's the dialogue we had yesterday. But we shouldn't hire someone because we think we need a city manager or city administrator.
Mr. Mayor? Callahan?
I'd just like to say that too, because we didn't throw the net out for administrators or managers or anything else. We didn't, we didn't put that net out there. Obviously, yeah, there's some skills that could happen, but you would want a much broader set when you decide where you're, which way you're headed.
Exactly.
To see what your options really would be.
And I don't think we've done that yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Well said.
Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. And just continuing Mr. Patrick Roth's discussion, I think for us to think upfront that salary, we want to hire somebody with, you know, to pay them less money and then let them grow up to it, might be a mistake. I happen to have a very personal knowledge about what planners make, just planners. And which we have a planner and we are lucky to be only paying him what we pay him. I know that there was a lot of comments that we needed because of the multitude of the different departments within the building department, that we needed somebody with management skills. Somebody that's going to be there every day and manage that department, not necessarily be a planner, because we have a real good planner. So that's the reason why I've, that I've leaned towards, I believe her name is Karen, because in listening to her talk, I felt that her management skills and her knowledge plus of planning made her a good catch. Now, I don't know what the salary is. I don't know what you think she's going to ask for or what we want to pay. But it goes back to what your daddy used to tell you. You're going to get what you pay for. And I think that's important. I know a young lady who just got her planning, I don't know what you would call it, degree? Yeah, they got a degree in geography. That's only been in the field for about a year and a half. That just got hired for over $100,000 a year. Planners are in demand in the state of Florida, especially with all the transplants that are now flocking to this state. I mean, this town is going to be like every other town in Florida. It is going to boom. It is going to really boom. Thank goodness I'll be too old to concern with it. I'll look out the nursing home window and wave at you guys when you come by. So I think it's very important to have somebody that's going to run that department that can manage it. Very important.
Byrd?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm just going to be out front with my position coming in. I, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't have that conversation yesterday. I would have had time to sort of think my position today. But I have one candidate that I was pretty much going forward with. And I believe, Mr. Kenny, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I have to say that one side of me, I try to look forward and to try to plan for things that are about to happen. It's not that I'm looking for a city administrator at all. But I just feel that if we could have someone in place, not that they have to be the city administrator, but to have the skill set in place. So right now, I'm sort of leaning towards, you know, the other candidate in looking at, okay. And Mr. Gallo, I think you were trying to clear some things earlier in the conversation with me, but I agree with you. I think that that would be a good candidate. So I just wish we, you know, and just finding, I still keep going back to the point of saying, even though Carl, over the months I've talked to you, but, you know, at about, what, 8:15 today, this morning, you know, I sort of find out that that's going to be a possibility. And yeah, I think ahead. But, and lastly, is that the three of you are going to be the decision makers for the next, I guess, next year or when, you know, the next two years at least. I'm not going to be one of those decision makers. So, you know, I just feel that right now, as I look at, you know, what's a good move, I think my second choice kind of moved up the list a little bit. So, but I agree with, other thing, they're both great candidates. I, you know, I interviewed them. I looked at the tape interviews three times. So having said that, I'm ready whenever anybody wants to do a straw poll or vote.
Would everybody entertain a motion? Do you want to wait till five?
Well, let me just, since some stuff was said. So first off, I believe that both of them would be a good manager. I mean, that's, if you've watched the interview, that's, I drove that point home, that we need management, 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 management. So I do believe that both of them would be a good manager. I don't think that one of them is going to be a better manager than the other. I personally believe probably Mr. Kenny would be more happy to be there and content to be there. And when it came to salary, the only reason, because I know these areas very well, what I'm about to say. One comes from the southeast Florida area, which is appropriately called the Gold Coast, as in cha-ching. Her expectation is she likes making a lot of money. The other one is in an area that I'm very familiar with called the Rust Belt. And the economics of that is the opposite. So it's not that one is worth more or one is, you know, it's a matter of that the economics of their personal lives are, that one will be very happy with the salary and one will be looking to get back to the salary that they're expected to. And once again, I really don't care which one, I'm just putting it all out there, that this is things that I see. And I really do not care which one we choose. I mean, I don't want to hold this up over my choice. It's.
Patrick, wouldn't your answer be answered or your question be answered? Because what we're going to do, if we do it, would be select an individual to negotiate with. And let's just play the game. Let's say that the majority of the people want the lady and we cannot negotiate with her. If she comes back and she's wanting too much, then you go to the other person. All we're going to do is select one to negotiate with.
And problem solving ahead, that I could tell you, because I had this conversation with her. She will come in wanting the top of the salary. The discussion's already been made. She'll want, we had a salary base, bottom, top.
What's the top?
Was it 130? Carl? I think it was 130?
Yes.
I think it's the salaries of department heads and I think it's 133, I think, or something.
Okay. And that is what she wants to come in at. It's not where she wants to be.
Well.
Now, the other one I could tell you said very happily, I'll come in at the bottom. That's what he said. And he'll be happy. So it's just all information out there so everyone understands where we're going.
Mr. Mayor, can I play the game again, which I loved the discussion with Patrick? I'll tell you a story. I mean, first of all, coming in at the top for somebody that has that experience, and I have no problem with it. But I'm going to go back to 1980 when department heads were making between 25 and 27, 28,000 dollars. When the then mayor appointed me fire chief, guess what my salary was? 18,000. Okay? And about four, five months of being paid 18,000 and all the other department heads making more money than me, because I didn't start at the top. I had a councilman chew my butt out one day and told me, he says, you need to start acting like a department head. And my comment was, if you want me to act like a department head, you need to pay me like a department head. That week I got my raise and came up to department head pay. So I don't have a problem with starting somebody in, if the, I mean, the responsibility's there. Why would they get paid less? They're a department head. They got the same responsibility as a department head that exists now. Pay them for it. If they don't make it, see ya.
Well, Gene, when I hear your story, I hear it a different way and I don't want to offend you or anything, but were you not acting like a department head? Were you hired for a department head and not acting like one on purpose?
No.
So you could get more money? Because that's kind of what I'm worried about.
Well, what I wasn't doing was playing the political games.
Well, that's, I don't want a politician.
I understand that, but you asked a question.
I don't want to hire a politician. You guys are hard enough to work with.
Patrick, I came in as a department head with 20 years of experience in the fire service.
I'm just, I'm just commenting on the story.
The first thing that got him upset, back then, a department head was permitted to come before city council and present his budget. I went out and bought a three-piece suit and bought a wand and I brought my budget up and got 6, 8, 10,000 dollars more than what the then mayor wanted me to have. He said, that's enough of that crap, you know.
Fast forward to today, 40 years later.
Pardon me?
Did you put hose in the budget?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
What's your motion?
My motion is to hire Mr. Kenny.
No, we're negotiating.
To negotiate the hiring, I forgot the word negotiate. Negotiate to hire Mr. Kenny Allen Dan Bittsabey.
I'll second your motion, but I can already count, so it'll go nowhere.
I haven't said that I had a.
Okay. You're right.
We have a motion and a second to negotiate with Mr. Kenny to fill the planning department vacancy. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. Ward five? One?
No.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion is five to two to negotiate with Mr. Kenny for the planning department vacancy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the record shows that the council unanimously asks for the negotiation with Mr. Kenny. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to say that that was unanimous vote. Mr. Gallo?
You don't have to explain this to me. I've never heard this before. You were telling me I need to change my vote?
No.
We're just distinguishing between hiring and negotiating.
I'm sorry?
We're distinguishing between hiring and negotiating with him.
No, it's negotiating.
We're negotiating, not hiring.
This is Carl's request.
This is Carl's request.
Yeah, okay.
Well, there will be an opportunity.
When it comes to say we're hiring this person, to say yes.
Yes, right, exactly.
They don't have unanimous.
Yeah, I'm willing to, whoever we decide to hire, I'm willing to be unanimous on that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Councilwoman Barti. So Carl, you set that process in motion?
Work with HR to inform the candidate and start those discussions.
All right.
And inform the other candidates as well. That what we would do is probably say that they were not the top choice and leave it at that for now. Because I think there's an obvious second choice if we need it. Or they can ask them if that would be their second choice.
Absolutely.
If you want to make a motion.
I think you would contact Mr. Kenny and make sure he wants to do that.
He isn't really still interested. As Mr. Rolfe said, he may have already found another job.
He was, when I discussed with him, he, remember, he has been in Florida before. He has raised in Florida. It's not all Pennsylvania.
No.
He had worked in St. Pete Beach, so he has been here before.
Okay.
This is where his mama wants to live, huh?
I think so.
Now, is there something else we need to do, Scott? All right, we're good. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Hearing none? Four, yeah, four o'clock. Yeah, you have a CRA meeting.
Yes, yes.
A 501 tag?
And 501, we have.
Four and 501.
501, we have a budget meeting.
Guys are screwing up.
Stand adjourned.